Until a regularly called city election occurs, the City Commission has the authority to fill a vacancy by majority vote of the commission. And so that's the process that we're in right now. The City Commission filling a vacancy on the commission from Commissioner Walker's vacancy until the next regularly scheduled city election. The process, the City Commission has established. Our interviews this morning, and probably presentation is the better word. The City Commission has decided that they would prefer to simply have a presentation from the candidates versus a back and forth question and answer format. And they've allotted 15 minutes per candidate with five minute breaks in between. And Ms. Berry, you're the first candidate. So you have 15 minutes to make a presentation.
Okay. Good morning again.
Good morning.
My name is Lolita Berry and I'm 67 as of next week. I will be 67. I have three children. I have five grandchildren. And I've worked for the Polk County School Board for 25 years. I've been very active in the community since 2009 perhaps, maybe before. I know I took my leadership class in 2009. And I am a part of the Lakeland Citizens Police Alumni Association as well as a volunteer for the Polk County Sheriff's Department to go into the facilities and minister to the latest. And as far as, that's it about me. Now, you have some questions you would like to ask me?
So we had sent those questions out beforehand. So if you want to walk through your notes, that'd be great.
Okay. That'd be awesome.
Out of consistency, we're going to try not to ask questions so that we don't give one person more preferential than another by asking certain questions.
First question I have is what's your vision for Lakeland moving forward? Especially your Northwest District representation? My answer is my vision for Lakeland is to make a positive difference in Lakeland and the Northwest District. My vision is to collaborate with the City Commissioners who have a vision to be vibrant, innovative, culturally inclusive, and to have a worldwide class community. Question two, timing. There are other board and committee assignments. Are you able to devote time to attend? Yes, I am available for other board and committee assignments. My time will be devoted and I am committed to perform my duties. These committees, on these committees, Legislative Committee, Transportation Plan and Organization Committee, which will be held in Barto, the Utility Committee here in Lakeland at the Lakeland Electric, Lakeland Area Transit District Committee, and the reading and replying of emails. However, I do not know how often these committees meet. I will ask that question or when you can answer it later. Third question, what's the largest budget amount of oversight you have approved presently? I work and oversee internal accounts on my job. I have worked in internal accounts for the past 10 years or more. This job entails accountability for funds submitted to the school for various activities. And over a 10-year period, this has been a huge amount of incoming dollars. Therefore, I do not have a dollar amount. Number four, why do you want to serve as an interim commissioner for the Northwest District? To serve as an interim commissioner for the Northwest District, it would enable me to work with a team of commissioners who would like to make a positive difference in the Northwest area by way of housing, schools, medical establishments, businesses, neighborhood uplifts, and the rezoning of property. Number five, what is a unique perspective you think you would bring to the current commission? Communication, listening, and applying positive efforts to make a positive difference in the city of Lakeland to resolve matters that would benefit all citizens of Lakeland. Number six, what's an issue that the City Commission deals with that would find, that I would find most interesting and why? One issue I would say is the cost of housing, especially for single parent homes with no transportation. Number seven, what do you see as an area the city needs to address? An area I see that needs to be addressed is the annexation of public works septic tanks in the Lakeland area. Number eight, what do you bring to the commission and why should we select you? What I bring to the commission is a positive moral character with a passion to serve and to be a voice for the citizens of Lakeland as we reclaim and continue to be an all-American city. I should be selected if you are searching for a person who is concerned and aware of the positive reflections of the city, which includes but are not limited to diversity, growth, production, and unity, to achieve goals that will benefit the entire quadrants of Lakeland. Number nine, what is the most challenging issue you have had to work through professionally and how that experience applies to serving in this role? Professionally, I haven't had any challenging issues to work through. Number 10, what do you know about infrastructure and how it works? Infrastructure is to make improvements, to facilitate growth and development in the city proper. Example, buildings, road improvement, power supplies, expansions, maintenance, and elevated skyways. Describe how your skill sets best fit the needs for representing citizens' interests from the Northwest District and the city overall. I have the ability to listen intently to problems or concerns and to analyze steps needed to achieve positive outcomes, to achieve obtainable goals. In addition, I have the ability to consult and cooperate with others. Number 12, my final question. In reviewing what has been accomplished in the last five by the commissioners' governance, what is the most significant unaddressed gap you'd like to see addressed? In reviewing the accomplishments of the past five years, I would say the most significant unaddressed gap in the past five years would be the homeless and where we can place them.
So you covered all that really well in about a little less than 10 minutes. So if you have any questions for us, this would be a good time to ask us questions. But that presentation was exactly what we had talked about having is each candidate go through and answer their questions to us and make their own presentations. So if there's anything you want to add or any questions you have for us, we can entertain those.
Well, I will add this in my closing remarks. I see Lakeland as, the commissioners as the salt of the earth. And they collaborate, gather ideas, but also I compare it to the sequoia tree. It's nurtured. Its nursery comes from the ground. We as the commissioners, the commissioners of Lakeland, we are the salt of Lakeland. We are to allow the city to grow and to flourish. And if it doesn't, it becomes a drop. So we don't want to not leave an inheritance to our children, our grandchildren. We need to establish something that they will want too and have a desire to live here in Lakeland.
Any questions for us?
How often does these committees meet?
Well, that's a good question. So the committees that are listed there are the ones that Commissioner Walker already serves on. So they might be changed because the mayor makes the appointments to various committees. So each of us serve in different capacities on different boards and committees. The TPO is every other month. And so that's the one in Barto, Transportation Planning Organization. The Transit Authority is every month. So some are every other month. I sit on Lakeland Vision, for instance. That's every other month as well. Well, actually, they take a few months off in the summer and it's every month. So it evens out. So it's just all different and varies. Some, like the Neighborhood Coalition Meetings, those are quarterly. That's not mandated for commissioners to attend, but it's an option. So there are things that happen throughout the year that there will be specific assignments to this seat.
Yes.
And then there'll be some, so the Legislative Committee one, for instance, is something Commissioner Walker served on for years that might get reallocated to somebody else in his absence.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Well, thank you so much for your time. We really, really appreciate you coming in and putting your name in the hat. Like it's always, I think we all agree that civically, people being engaged, and you've been engaged a long time, but just having the wherewithal to submit your name for something like this is a huge, it's a big deal. And it's something that we all really appreciate as we sit in these chairs. So thank you so much for being willing to serve.
Thank you. Thank you to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do I wait until the end?
No. And I should say that the decision will not be made today. It'll be made next Monday at the regular state commissioner.
So then we'll take five minutes in between, right? Sean, how does that one time?
I heard it was 10 minutes and 16 seconds.
Okay, cool.
Should we start a little? Yeah. They'll just simply be listening and then next Monday will be the time for the decision. So, porger.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I want to first start out by saying thank you for allowing me to come forth in front of you. My name is Tracy Faison. I am a longtime resident, born and raised here in our beautiful city. I graduated from Kathleen High School, continued my education at University of South Florida. I'm a registered nurse. I have been a registered nurse for 32 years. I oversee special needs, daycares, facilities, and also I oversee two Lululee football organization for over 22 years. Those organizations have approximately 300 participants in each. I also have developed a cheerleading certification to certify cheerleading coaches, which cheerleading coaches throughout the USA. I also have developed a small business. What I do, I build homes, affordable homes for our citizens. Also, to start off, my vision. My vision for the city as well as the Northwest District is to maintain orderly, to improve qualified life, i.e. bring more economical dollars, decrease youth and adult crime, also to handle the, I'm sorry, decrease the homelessness issues that we have. Do I have the time? Yes, I have the time. Have I managed, throughout my career in overseeing those facilities, I have approved a 1.2 million budget. That is including operational and billouts. Have I, what do I see and what do I bring to the table? I bring dignity. I bring humbleness. I bring compassion for our community. So what do I see and what interests me that the commission board has done? I commend you on bringing the rice. It is, it will save the city so much money in the long run. Also, it will improve our environment. I want to, do I have the time to sit on the boards that Commissioner Walker sit on? Yes. I have already met with some board members to get some input and some knowledge. So what is, what do I bring to the table and why should I be selected? I am self-motivated. I have the ability to work under pressure. I am also responsible and very efficient. I also have worked at the legislative level in health, but we always can divert that into the city as well. What I want to end by saying, I would like to thank you all. I have the utmost respect. What I want to do, I also want to say this. It's no I in team. I'm a team player. I will oversee the city as well as Northwest District. And in closing, I want to thank everyone. I will bet I will work to the best of my ability, entertaining hours, whatever it takes to get the job done. Thank you so much.
So since we're not really going to ask questions of you, this is a great time. If you wanted to dive deeper on any of these answers and talk a little bit more, but that was excellent. So you can take some time to do that because you still have, you still probably have about 10 minutes.
Okay.
Or ask us, yeah, let's get in there. Or ask us questions too.
Could you all tell me, what are you all looking for in someone to replace Commissioner Walker?
You go first. You like to call it more.
We're going to go on the table. Well, I'll let Ms. Commissioner McLeod go for a second.
That's a great question. And so I think it's, it is challenging to look at someone filling his role for one year. Commissioner Walker, as you know, brings a wealth of experience and history and knowledge of the community that we see in every meeting. And so I think looking at someone who knows the district, knows even beyond the Northwest District, because we certainly vote on and discuss issues that are citywide, but someone who knows the district, the residents, that community, and has a heart and passion for that, and can also, I think, get up to speed on the issues that are before us and are coming to the commission over the next year. For me, that's what I'm looking for.
Commissioner Ma, do you have any?
Absolutely. So I echo Commissioner McLeod's sentiments. And to me, it's just absolutely integral that we don't lose any speed with residents feeling they have a voice. Because in my opinion, it's put us in an awkward position to do an appointment when this is supposed to be an elected position. And so, you know, that wouldn't have been my first choice to appoint someone because I really want, the goal is to have seven who are a diverse group, who represent everyone. And we know we need a majority to put things forward and we have a $700 million budget and a lot of things to decide that are mostly budgetary. But at the end of the day, I'd rather be one vote and lose and feel like my constituents were represented at the table, that when they asked me a question, that question was asked. And so I know sometimes staff will think of Stephanie Madden's asking these tough questions or why is Stephanie Madden upset with something? Could be that Stephanie Madden doesn't care at all. But I'm just hearing that at Publix or the library or on the sidelines of the football field. And it's, I feel my duty as an elected to represent people. So I'm at large, so I feel like I need to represent everyone. And I feel like the people in the Northwest District are counting on us to find someone who adequately collectively, you know, represents their voice. Not every voice, you know, can be at the table with only seven. But you feel and you have confidence that your person is going to ask that question or represent your view or make sure that doesn't happen for your neighborhood. And so that, I don't know, you know, what you would say, like I don't know for sure where you live or, you know, what your experiences in that Northwest District in particular. But that's my utmost concern, is those folks in that Northwest District feel they don't have a nine-month lack of like, huh, I don't have a voice at the table.
Correct.
Thank you. Again, usually I'm the one vote, the next, the whole back vote, is I would look for someone that's pretty conservative physically as well as looking out for the general public as well. Can I represent the Northeast, which is the largest group, but probably the least populated, I would guess, to say at this point from our geographic size. But I'm more of a conservative and I seem to be the more no vote on a lot of issues than everyone else. From my perspective, I may be wrong, but I think that's a pretty good representation. And I don't want to take any more of your time.
That's great. That's great.
Do you want to comment?
Yeah, I just, again, I think it's echoing what they've said. I mean, we're looking for somebody not necessarily to replace Commissioner Walker, but to represent that area. And we know that just like all of the areas that we live in, you know, every house is different, every household has different opinions. So trying to disseminate that and come up with somebody who we think can look at the group of people and be that voice is critical. And that's why we're all kind of, even though the people have said in the election that they want it to be done this way, it really is a shame because we don't really get to dig in as much as we would during a campaign. But it is just a year and I think that that time will go by very quickly.
Yeah, I think so too. And I echo what everybody else says. I want to be cognizant of your time and see if there's more you want to share or ask.
Yes, yes, yes. I also want, thank you. I also want to touch bases on growth. I think growth is wonderful as long as we have the infrastructure. Growth, growth in Lakeland is special. It's between two metro cities. And we are the beautify between those two big cities. So I think, I think we have a gem here. Just to touch basis on, I grew up in that Northwest area, more so just FYI where Lincoln and Amos and 14th. So yes, I grew up, I still have family in that area. I still go to that area, even though I still reside in the Northeast, excuse me, the Northwest District, a little further out, but I still visit that area. My kids still go to that area. My mother-in-law still is there. My grandkids still is there. So yes, I will speak among that Northwest District and represent them very well. Thank you.
Any other questions for us?
That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you throwing your name in the hat and participating in this process. That just shows your love of Lakeland. So we really appreciate that and that you took the time to do everything that the commission had asked our clerk, the city clerk, to do with our candidates. So thanks so much.
Thank you. And everybody have a great day. You too.
Bye-bye.
Actually, we'll start at 8:40 if you have anything to take care of. So with that, you have 15 minutes, Ms. Ford.
You have 15 minutes. You are not going to ask the question? You want me to just talk?
Yes.
Are you serious?
That's why we sent you those questions ahead of time.
Oh, okay. Well, can I look at my paper or just?
Absolutely.
Is that included in here?
There's a, there was a question there. Tracy had one down the front.
He hasn't. You have yours? Oh, you have yours. That's it. There you go.
Well, my name is Darryl Forehand and I've been a resident of Lakeland, the Northwest District, for over 40 years. I am a military veteran. I served in the United States Navy onboard the USS Sproonts, DD 963. It was a brand-new destroyer. And I've been to about 35 different countries onboard the USS Sproonts. I met the president of Monrovia, Liberia. Matter of fact, if I could just tell you, I've been to all over France, Italy, Spain, Germany, been to Israel twice, Puerto Rico, Cuba, been to Africa, Norway, you name it. Just a wonderful career. And after I spent time in the military, I came back home. I earned a associate's degree in computer engineering technology. Then I attended Southeastern University where I earned an associate's, a bachelor's, and a master's from Southeastern University. I spent a number of years as a probation officer here in the city of Lakeland. I had a career that stemmed about 30 years in corrections. During that time, I was an education supervisor at the prison. I was a chaplain. I also served, well, I did a number of things. I was a correction officer, just a number of positions in that. Also, along with that, I, under Governor Scott, I was a commission investigator. I actually had the people who violated their conditional release after their release. I actually set up the hearings. I would subpoena, I would subpoena the police officer, the victim. And after hearing all of the evidence, I would have to make a decision on should the person go back to prison. And quite often, my recommendation, if he violated his conditional release, my recommendation was that he go back to prison. So in the community, I've been a pastor also for over 30 years. I've been a diocesan bishop for over 14 years. And I have churches that I oversee and manage from about Daytona to Tampa. So I've had a wonderful career in that. And more generally, my experience has been, you know, I was the president of PAL for a number of years. And both Dr. Carriga and I served together. And after that, just started teaching a little bit for W. O. Barna College. And then they asked me whether I would consider being the dean. And, you know, it's basically online, just a couple of days a week. But, you know, so just a long career. Let me get to some of the questions. You all asked, number one, what is your vision for Lakeland moving forward in the Northwest District? My vision is to just gradually move into the position, to try to learn the position, to understand how to serve as a city commissioner, and learn from the wealth of experience that that's currently on the board. So it is not so much my vision, but the vision. that, that's currently on the board. So it is not so much my vision, but the vision to be a part of the team and to be, to provide what I call some cohesiveness in the absence of Philip Walker. Number two, you asked about time and would I be able to serve on the various boards and assignments. I've looked at just about every assignment of Philip Walker. And I can say honestly that I am committed, as you all very well know, to being present and prompt and prepared and doing whatever it is that the Board would ask me to do. I'm, I'm very committed. So, yes, I'm available. And I will continue to attend every meeting that I am designated or assigned to. You all asked about what significant budgets or amounts that I have approved or had the, some oversight into. Well, PAL had about a, I think about a quarter of a million dollar budget. And as the, one of the Board members, I was there and we did make the approval for those things. But I also serve on a large organization, the Church of Our Lord Jesus Christ. And there, our budget is about a million. And I've served 14 years as the, on the Board, as the Secretary and Correspondence Secretary and the Recording Secretary. So, one of the other questions that you all asked was, why do I want to serve? And why I want to serve is because people matter. And I live in the District. And I would like to represent all of the people of the Northwest District. That's from downtown, the Dodger Road, to Olive, all the way to Gibbs Galloway and, and on the county line and even further. Just all of the people. And I think that having some diversity on the Board matters too. And I know that there's been problems because a lot of people who are African-American do not vote as they should. But hopefully that will improve. Hopefully that will improve. What unique perspective do you think you bring to the current Commission? Well, I'll say that I'm homegrown. And I do have some experience when it comes to government. Limited, but I do have some experience just in the area of being present and being to meetings, learning and trying to understand. Number six, what is an issue that the City Commission deals with that you find most interesting? Well, there are a number of things. Homelessness is one, growth is another. And I think those are just two of the issues that we're gonna face. But one of the good things about that is I like the fact that the Mayor and the City Commissioners seem to be aggressive when it comes to strategic planning. I, I think you all are trying to get ahead of the ball. I think you are. And so that is something that I would like to be a part of too. What do you see as an area that the city needs to address? I think that would be recruitment and hiring. I would like to see all the positions that are on the city's website that says continuous, continuous, because we've been trying to hire people for a long time. Just maybe there's some things we can do to, to help. I know we went far near to find offices years ago. I think we just have to continue to work to try to get all those positions filled. Because those positions being filled, it, it adds and it grows the economy. It allows people to be much more independent when they have employment. What do you bring to the Commission? And why should we select you? I hope that I will bring chemistry to the Commission. In other words, I think I know how to get along with people really well. I think I'll bring commitment. Because I'll be present. I, it's, it's, some people never showed up to one meeting. This is not a Jack-in-the-Box raffle. I don't believe it is. They never showed up to one meeting, but they put their name in for an office and never tried to see what the actual problems of the city, what they were. And so I want to, I want to be present.
Mr. Forhan, I'm sorry, just to give you, we got about three minutes left, Commissioners.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So I think I have the commitment, the character, the chemistry, and the competence to do this job and to represent the Northwest District and, and all of Lakeland. And, and I, and I'll be fair. And so on that note, I'm open to any questions, anything that you would like to say to me.
Do you have any questions for us?
I hope you all will consider me. That would be my only thing that I would like to ask, that you all consider me.
Commissioner Reed.
Any closing remarks?
No, I thank you for the time and opportunity. And I'll continue to do all that I can do to be part of the city from whatever level that I can.
Well, we appreciate you signing up and participating and attending the meetings and being an engaged citizen and wanting to, to serve. So thank you so much. We know it's hard to sit in that seat. So we really appreciate you working so diligently to put your name in and, and attempt to serve in this capacity. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Have a great day. Yes, sir.
The nature of a presentation on the part of candidates versus a back-and-forth question-and-answer session. The decision will not be made this morning. They're just gathering information. That decision will be made at the City Commission meeting next Monday. So you have 15 minutes to make a presentation. The floor is yours.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, I guess here, first of all, I'm gonna have to excuse me. I haven't had a job interview in about 36 years. The last time I ever signed up for anything was in the military. So I'm under the impression you guys are wanting to ask me questions? Or do you want me to start off with just saying who I am? You know, my name is Guy. I'm a, I'm a U.S. Navy veteran. I'm a proud business owner, serving right here in Northwest District. I've been in business for 18 years. After serving in the military, I came right back to Northwest District. I am the father of seven, father to seven. I'm the husband of one. I have one grandchild, two great, two grandchildren on the way. And I'm seeking this to make a difference within Northwest District that I love personally. Any questions?
So we're not gonna ask questions? You can walk through?
So you're not gonna ask questions? I can just walk through this? And I went out of the way to lay this all out so it'd be nice and easy to ask questions and stuff. Wonderful. All right. Well, one of the questions that really stuck in there was, to me, that it was asked several different times was, what do you want, why do you want to serve the Commission in Northwest District? And I did come out, it was asked in more than one way, so excuse me. But the best way to explain it is always had the desire to be a servant leader. And the best way to do that is to have a seat at the table. You know, I've lived in Lakeland for over 40-plus years, mostly in the Northwest District. Started my business once again in the Northwest District. I've seen growths become malls, and I've seen malls become churches. And we have a rich and diverse Northwest District community that curtails all the way from West Argry all the way down to Crescent Hills to North Warren Tap. So the spectrum of solutions and problems all curtails. And the best way to have a seat at the table is to assist the City Commissioner, assist the Mayor, the City Commissioners, and to continue the good work that we're doing. This way I look at it. You know, I didn't know who was gonna lead this way. I was asked about if I had time for the City Commissioner. I've always desired to serve. And I seek to serve well in any capacity that it would have me to. Some of the needs that I see that we need to do is we already have a strained infrastructure, not just affordable housing and affordable rents, but also technology, transportation, different growth aspects, not just Northwest, but Lakeland as a whole. Our migration here since 2020 puts us in the center of, and in the direct middle of Polk County, which is at one time the seventh fastest-going district. We're the center of that. We attract everyone. With that, we also have the ability to attract better businesses, better technology businesses, better green space protection agencies, different things that reach out and catch me as a whole and as an individual. We have approximately 10 million people with 100 miles that could offer their talents to us here in Lakeland. We need to be seeking those people to come live here, reside here, and help us grow. We're not gonna beat this growth thing. We're not. I feel that I bring 30 years of business management experience, ownership. I do possess strong business and analytical skills, financial skills. I have a heart for small business. My heart strongly lies within smart business and the ability to harbor those relationships through trust built through transparency is a good technique. I feel the City Commission has done an excellent job doing that, and it should continue to do that. So we're not prepared for this, guys. I didn't know we were just talking. But I do appreciate the flow. Thank you very much. Something that stuck out was, the last question that was asked was in reviewing, what was accomplished in the last five years as Commission's Governor? What was the most significant unaddressed gap you'd like to see? And I don't know which one of you guys were throwing that trick question in there, but I love it. There's so many different things. We are such, I like to look, Lakeland's more than just a city to me. Lakeland is a brand. And I don't think a lot of people think of Lakeland as a brand, but it is. Well, we try to keep the small-time feel, the small-time feel of Lakeland. We are in fact on the road. I know this stands out as maybe a sore thumb, but a lot of us are seeing like a conclusion. They want, Lakeland citizens want to see some next-chapter ideas in reference to Munn Park since the moving of the statue. And I think we should, in one way, prioritize a group, some type of leadership to create a stimulating and unique solution to what I consider a little bit of a bear center in Munn Park. It's sort of a hub. It encompasses less than a quarter mile from here. It's such a beautiful area. I think we've done such a well job in addressing the needs of Lakeland, but it's time to dress it up. I think we need more public-private partnerships. We long for more publics and private partnerships to help stimulate what's going on here in Lakeland. And I know I'm all over this place, folks, so please bear with me. Why should you select me? Because I want you to. I wish I would be the answer. But I work well with others and I'm highly motivated. I'm a longtime resident. I've established many longstanding relationships here in Lakeland. I have the ability to work with others. I believe in respecting other people's perspectives on things, their views on things, and at the same point, try to gain through learning from them. We're a diverse community. We're a diverse Board. And we're gonna continue to do that. So I think that's part of the thing. Transparency and trust is earned that way. I found it very interesting the way the City Commissioner, they asked a question. I really enjoyed it. It was like, what would you like to do with, what do you find most interesting? I never really realized how much work you guys really put into all these land purposes and land agreements and how you have Sean doing circles down here trying to find stuff, you know? But the work that goes into the land usage proposal, operational issues, the budgets, the mill rates, everything that you all have just currently done, try to find a fine balance of whether you're gonna raise mill rates, not raise mill rates. You're dealing with electricity going up twice, people concerned about the taxes, and what a sensitive time to be doing it in. So I find it interesting. I find it challenging. And I welcome those things. In particular, what are your areas of passion for the city? I'm a new Board member. I've been a longtime volunteer of Kids Back. We are dedicated to feeding the disadvantaged children by giving them a backpack every weekend to try to remove some of their food insecurities and sustain them throughout the weekends. So that's very passionate to me, food insecurities. Another one, I absolutely love Bob Donahue and his group. I have a huge soft spot for Parks and Recs. As a young child, I lived just down the street on the outside, and I used to go to Tiger Town. Yes, I am that old. So Tiger Town was a great place to be in the summer. You go swim in the city's pools, enjoy the city's events. And it's just great. Parks and Recs is wonderful. Those are just some of the community programs I hope to see strengthened. You know, we need to strengthen some of our community's assets that just help our youth. PAL, Tiger Town, Parks and Recs, those are all wonderful things. Areas to address, we've already discussed that. We've already discussed that. These questions are a little redundant. Not redundant, but repetitive. Someone asked about infrastructure. There are many various types of infrastructures, construction work, technology, transportation, communication networks, school systems. Those are all just a few. I know that you, that we're trying to see if we're seeking for a basic understanding. I assure you I do, but I'm willing to learn whatever's needed to do. I haven't done an interview in 36 years. I haven't had to talk like this, so excuse me while, I know that you guys are trying to avoid the rabbit holes. And I truly appreciate the way that that was listed. So.
Any questions for us?
I do, actually. I do. And I actually had one for Philip, and he's not here. And that's sad. That's sad. Because I, one of the questions was really directed at what he saw was who needed more, you know, in his 12 years and 10 minutes. So Philip Walker's actually sort of an example, especially more so in the last year, year and a half to me, trying to get this business off the ground and deal with many different interworkings of mortar, brick and mortar versus leasing, you know? In business, we're hoping to build. So I have the experience in dealing with budgets and maintenance and maybe a small number, but 1.6 million for private businesses is huge for us. So we're trying to build this warehouse. And Philip is very instrumental. So that only led for further reasoning as wanting, want to be involved in the community. He's more of a people person, a Commissioner for all people. And that stuck with me. Because when you get a phone call from a City Commissioner and he tells you, hey, I'm sorry, I can't make your event. You guys don't have to do that. How many events do you all attend a week? I've seen some of you. I've had the pleasure of having you. And you're all invited to every one of them, whether I am selected or not. But it went a long ways. He was being, goes back to being a servant leader. We're here for our people. And Philip really was. Really was. He didn't have to call me, hey, I can't make your event. My wife just retired. We're going out of town. So that stuck with him. You know, he set an exemplary example on how to, to deal with it. I wish to serve all of Northwest Lakeland. Not a small section of it that I know can be a concern. But Northwest Lakeland is huge. It's many, many beautiful, wonderful, and diverse people within it. And I seek your opportunity to serve well with you, to help assist you in going further with the city of Lakeland. And it would be an honor if you would see that through. Anything for me? Are you not allowed to?
Just if you had any questions for us? If not, how are we on time, Sean?
We're at just about 11 minutes.
11 minutes. So you have about four minutes left if you want to ask us anything. You don't have to take it either.
Yeah, I get it. I don't know if I'm doing well or not, you know? It's sort of like being in school when you're tertiary. Here's your book report. And what's your stand-up, Johnny, and give it. So, you know, you do well and you're, you're reading research. And you're like, there's no good answer. There's no bad answers. It's truly what you really seek to do. And I don't know how to express that. I don't. I mean, I love Lakeland. This is my home. It's always been my home. You know, I've seen it change. The biggest thing that sticks through me, if I can give to you anything about who I am, I'm a lot more than just someone, you know, that just does charities, you know, or a Board member. Like I just got selected to be on the Polk County Board for Housing and Authority. But that's a great honor. Wonderful things are all important to me. But Lakeland's still my home. You know, when you raise your kids here, we've all raised our kids here. We've all raised our kids. We've seen them our kids. We've seen them grow. We've seen the good. We've seen the bad. I know we just want to make a positive. There's a lot of good candidates you got to choose. So I had the great opportunity to be going to that NAACP forum. Terry Coney was a wonderful host to all of us. He made us feel great. And, you know, it was great to express to another group, another forum. I just seek the opportunity to be selected, and that's all I really have. I'm sorry. There's not more.
No, no, it's great. Absolutely, it's great.
All right. So the decision will be made by the city commission, as I said, next Monday at the regularly scheduled city commission meeting.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, guys. My time, pleasure.
Now, the questions that the commissioners were interested in hearing from, hearing about, to you, so they've looked here, you comment on those questions. The decision won't be made this morning. This is just third in listening mode this morning, and then the decision will be made next Monday at the regularly scheduled city commission meeting. So with that, you've got 15 minutes.
Everyone has one? Okay. I'll stand up just for a moment. Is that okay? Okay. I just want to say good morning to everyone that's here. I don't see mayor mugs. No. Okay. Good morning to the commissioners and others here in the room. I want to tell you a little bit about myself.
Hold on just one second. There's a noise. It's kind of distracting me. What is it?
I was trying to, is it something outside?
Sounds like a printer. It does, but I can't hear you right now. Okay.
Something feeding something through.
Backing up, kind of attract other things?
Yeah, take them out. It sounds a little...
It is, it's...
It's the camera, maybe.
Is it stuck?
The camera's not down.
Rotate, rotate.
Is that what it is like?
I don't know. I was trying to feel the vibration, but it, no, it's not.
Sorry, Veronica.
I've never heard that in here. We'll start again.
I'll say that.
Like, I've never heard of this.
You know what that is, Andrew?
I can hear it, but I, of course.
They went the next room. When she opened that door, it got a lot louder.
Okay, so it's not coming from here.
Did you find it?
No, because there's a little cluster. Sean's on the kitchen side. I hear it again now. I think somebody's working somewhere.
It could sound almost like a hammer drill to me.
Sound like the...
I've heard everything from printer to hammer drill to someone backing up. So what is this noise?
That's a testament to everyone's experience.
Hammer drill. It sounds like they're drilling the concrete to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all relative to...
They're working on that elevator.
What does it sound like from the nonprofit world?
I'm distracted. Metal detector. There's someone.
Well.
You'll do take two?
Better throw it.
Okay. At least we've acknowledged it. It's distracted. I agree. So we'll just, we'll start over. We'll start fresh.
Is that a omen?
No.
It is not. It is not a omen. Okay, so we're going to start over?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, city commissioners and everyone here. I want to introduce myself. I am Veronica Roundtree. I am a longtime resident of the city of Lakeland, of the Northwest District. I'm a retired educator. I actually retired twice. I retired from the Polk County School System and from the Health Department. Since retiring, I do full-time community, I'm a full-time community advocate. I'm a co-founder of a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, Basic Life Solutions, and I'm the president of the Valencia Pinehurst Neighborhood Association. Currently, I am the chair of Code Enforcement, Habitat for Humanity. I am the chair for the board of directors. I'm chair of the Summer Works Program, where we have youth come in and find work, and we chaired with Career Source. I am the chair of the NAC scholarships. In addition to serving on those boards, I have worked, I am on several committees like Lakeland Electric Advisory Committee, the Mayor's Gang Task Force when it was named that, Citizens Academy. I went through that program. That's Citizens with the city of Lakeland. I'm on Lakeland Vision with the law enforcement committee part. I am the NAC chair for the parade committee for NAC, for the Martin Luther King Parade. I am on the advisory board for LPD, Community Engagement Task Force, Focus on Leadership. I went through that program. Lakeland Police Citizens Academy, I went through that program. The City of Lakeland Academy. I have been awarded for my community efforts for the following: Golden Garland Award, Community Service Award. I received two awards for that. New Life Ministries Community Service Award, NAC, NAACP Community Leadership Award this year. And I have received many more awards that I will not talk about. The set of questions that I looked at and thought would be good for me to talk on was why do you, question set number two, why do you want to serve as the interim commissioner for the Northwest District? I want to make sure that the Northwest area continue to be included in the growth of Lakeland. A lot of positive things have happened, a lot of changes have occurred in that area, but we need to continue to expand on those efforts. As the city of Lakeland expands and prospers, I want to ensure that the Northwest District in Lakeland is included with equal representation and resources. The second question, what's a unique perspective you think you would bring to the current commission? My boots-on-the-ground approach. I'm one that go out in the community. I walk the community. At one time, they called me walking alone, because I go and knock, knock, knock on those doors and let the community know what's going on. I pass out flyers. When I hear about food programs going on, I go to the elderly and give them that information. I take them when it's time to go vote. I take them when they need doctor's appointments for the elderly and don't have a way, they call me. I take them to the doctor's appointments, bring them back. And I, I just have a love for the community, you know? That's me. I'm a Libra. I just had a birthday Friday. It was my birthday. And that's my, that's me. I'm a scale of justice. I equally balance everything out. And I also have given to not just the Northwest area. I went beyond. We have had people that call me because they heard I have a 501(c), and with that 501(c), it can help people in any situation. We have had people that had funerals, had death in the funeral, and didn't have no one else to help them out with repass and different things. I went and made sure that those families had a nice repass and everything. I've been called from out at Kathleen area, people that didn't have food. I had them to meet into grocery stores, give them a buggy, and let them get the food that they want, not that what I had stored. Let them go and pick out what was essential to them and their households. So I reach out. I do those things for my community. I love my community. I love my people. I love everyone. I try to make sure that we have a diverse community. Far as when we have our meetings, I go out and knock on those doors so we have new people moved in the neighborhood. I knock and introduce myself, tell them to come to the meetings, and if they're a little slow, while it's understanding me, I go and get someone else that speak their language, bring them with me so they can understand, because I want everybody included in what we do. You know, it's not a one person, a two person, a three, it's all, we have a melting pot here in Lakeland. We have so many different variety of people and tongues here. So we need to make sure that we put people in that can reach out and reach those people. My second, my third question was, what's an issue that the city commission deals with that you would find most interesting and why? I like how the city, the commission interacts with the community and allow the participants five minutes to express themselves, because if you don't, then they carry on. They just go on, and they want to tell you what's wrong, what's right, and why you wasn't fair with me, but you did this with someone else. So that five minutes stops all of that. And I love that. On the code enforcement board, being a chair, I want five, I would want five minutes. And they say, no, you just got to let them express themselves, you know? I said, but they go on and on and on like that, you know? But they said, no, give them that time. But I love the way the approach, you all approached that. And the only issue that, that I feel I can go out and educate and encourage other people, if they have questions, don't just sit back and guess what you think is going on. Come to the city commission meetings. Come and sit there. Get your, if you need to get on the agenda, come. And express yourself that way, in a positive way. Don't come negative. Don't come up with all that. Have some common sense and bring something that is fruitful to the committee. And I, you know, I would be willing to talk to them and educate them concerning those things. And that would be giving them courage to come and be a part of the system also. And to close out, I don't know how many minutes I have, but to close out with everything that I just said to you all, I would love the opportunity of sitting in those seats with you all. I think you all are some of the best, best picked group of people that the city has really put into the seats. I really do. And I feel that I'm one of those people, and I would love to be up there with you all if given the opportunity to do that. I have the love for it. I have the time for it. As far as going on those meetings and things, I'm available. I'm available. I do have a 501, but I have someone else that can do that. I am available anytime that it's needed, day, night, weekend. If I have to travel, it's no problem, because it's just me. So with that, and my education and what I just brought to you and spoke to you about, think about me. Give me that opportunity, please. Thank you. I bless you all and have a nice day.
Thank you so much.
We're nine minutes, six minutes left.
Do you have any questions for us that you want to ask us?
Um...
You don't have to. It's not, it's not, yeah. It's not a have to, but if you're curious about anything.
Well, what are you, what are you all looking for in this seat that's available?
That's a great question. I'll go with...
I'll take that first. Yeah, basically, what, we were asked that question before, and really what we're trying to do is not, like I said earlier, not fill Philip's seat, right? Because that's, he's a representative. So fill somebody, get somebody who can fill that seat knowing the community, you know, right? It's like each one of the districts that we represent, it's big. It's bigger than my house, right? It goes out from there. So finding somebody who has their finger on the pulse, who's willing to take the time, I would say that that was one thing that I'm glad we're talking about now, because the amount of work that it does take is a lot of time. So, you know, it's just finding somebody who is not looking to take this seat because it can take them somewhere, but that they can, they can be a help personally.
Is that your question?
Yeah, I think that was good. I think that, you know, we answered the last candidate who asked us that. We said that certainly somebody who knows the district, but beyond, as there are many issues that are citywide that come before us, someone who is up to speed as best you can without being on the commission currently, but knows ready to step in and tackle a lot of the things that are coming our way over the next year and realizing the limitations of, it's challenging to, no one will replace Commissioner Walker, but someone who can step in and serve for that, at least that year.
And also, I want to say that I am the president of the Neighborhood Association that Philip Walker lives in. So I am his neighborhood president. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much for your time. Thank you.
Have a great rest of your day.
You too. You too. Thank you so much.
And to hear your response in particular to the questions that the different commissioners asked, this is more the nature of a presentation on your part, your part addressing the questions versus a back-and-forth interview. The decision won't be made this morning. They're just in listening mode this morning, and as you know, the decision will actually be made at next Monday's city commission meeting. So we've got 15 minutes.
Okay. That was one of my questions.
Yeah. So it's yours, Shar.
Okay. Well, my name's Ricky Shar. I've lived here in Polk County all of my life. I was born and raised here. My wife and I have four children. I have been blessed with nine grandchildren. I mean, they're, they're in my life. I have one autistic grandson that, you know, you're not supposed to love one child more than the other, but he's got a special spot in his heart here for me. And we were together last night. We were at the, the old Civic Center. They had a play yesterday, Oliver, and my 13-year-old, her 12-year-old granddaughter was in the play. So she had practiced quite a bit, and I was very impressed. Those kids put on a great show. She didn't want us here the first night, but I got to go for the final performance. But, you know, I've lived here. I love this community, and it's just a great community, and I'd love to serve on the commission. Actually, I just got off the phone with Chris at the airport about 20 minutes ago, because I'm thinking, I'm going to reach out to him, I was thinking, and I was provided his phone number, and he called me back. And I said, Chris, what can I do if I'm selected to help you? And I was unaware that, you know, he was telling me the good things about the airport, and being Adam was appointed last week. He said, Adam's, his brain's in the group. I said, okay. He said, back in 2019, there were 74.4 million, but now they're a 1.5 economic engine for the city of Lakeland. And I think the airport is a great, great for city of Lakeland. Now, you know, some of the things that I see, the RP Funding Center having to subsidize it, maybe Cleveland Heights Golf Course, that would be something I think the commissioners should get together and work that out. And, you know, this is such a great community. David Bunch belongs to my Kiwanis Club, and one Friday afternoon after the Kiwanis meeting, David said, come and take a ride with me, him and another person. So the three of us went out to Bonnet Springs, when it was then known as Hobo Jungle, Chinese Jungle. And I was very shocked to see, because the three of us walked into these hobo camps, and they had it roped off with caution tape. And that was their community. I mean, even if you had your square, you could even rent then part of them space to other homeless people. And I never realized, I knew we had a homeless problem, but when going in there and actually seeing what these people are doing, and David said they were paying them to relocate. I'm thinking, relocate where? You know, this is something that was on my mind. And... You know, this is something that was on my mind. And, but I got to see, because David took me and showed me the actual spring at Bonnet Springs, and I never knew anything like that existed. And I, and I think when it opens in two weeks, it's gonna help. Maybe the RP Funding Center. I know that they have purchased the old Florida tile property. That's gonna be, I'm glad to see something be done with that property. And my hat's off to Publix and the Barnett family, because I talked to Wesley and I was at the Detroit Tigers, Tigers barbecue, and I said, "You know, I want to thank you and your family for what you're doing for the city of Lakeland." And he responded, and he said, "You know, I'm basically doing it for my mom." And I said, "Wow, what a tribute, what an honor." So, yes, Lakeland is just a wonderful community. As far as the growth, you're not gonna stop growth. Bill Beasley came to our Kiwanis Club two weeks ago and gave us state of county report about how we're doing, and there's eleven hundred people moving to Florida every day. And most of those people coming from California, New York. And, and he said probably sixty to eighty are coming to Polk County, and probably sixty are coming to Lakeland. I mean, we're known for greatest city in the world, I think. And so, I don't blame these people for coming here, but you gotta have affordable housing and obtainable housing, and we don't have that. I mean, I look to see that we get it, but right now, I don't know what the answer is. Just controlling growth, I think, would be something the commission needs to look at. Yesterday, we were, it's my granddaughter's fourteenth birthday, after the play, we're going out to Outback, Northside, we thought. They said, "There's no way that we can handle that many people." So, they said, "We can go to the Southside." Well, I said, "Great," because something I wanted to see about the South Florida road diet. And traveling down South Florida, I'm showing my family the concrete curb that about is this high. It's a lot higher than the regular curbs, and you can see so many black marks down both sides where people has run into them. Being in the towing business, I know it creates accidents. I've worked them, I've been out there. I don't know the answer. I know it's a DOT problem along with the city of Lakeland. I know there was an article in the paper that you were mentioned. So, I don't know. That needs to be looked into. I think from what I'm hearing, most people are against it. It's one of the problems the commission is gonna have to address, I'm sure, with FDOT. But, any questions for me?
We actually aren't gonna ask questions. We gave you those questions.
Oh, okay.
If there's anything in there you want to share with us, that you said specifically you want to elaborate on, I think you have some time to do that.
We're at six forty-three right now, so...
Yeah, you've got time.
Got about eight minutes.
Well, I can run some red lights. You know, I don't know what I could add to this city. If you go to a large corporation, say a tech corporation, all you have to do is bring them to Lakeland, and Lakeland kind of sells itself, I think. I mean, it's just, of course, I grew up here. I'm a little prejudiced, but, you know, it's October, I mean, and it's, look at the weather outside, it's just, of course, I know that we have just been through a hurricane that has just devastated parts of Florida. But, you know, Saturday, I went to Kathleen Lions Club too, and put in a lot of time with them, and we had our annual fish fry, so I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself. I have been involved in the community. One of the passions, as you can tell, is eating and cooking barbecue. But we have done that for fundraisers. Back when the two Tampa police officers were murdered a few years, several years ago, and you're thinking, "Why would I get involved with Hillsborough County and Tampa PD?" Well, one of the teachers talked with my daughter in Northwest at Kathleen Middle School, Co-Cab. And me and two of my buddies got together and said, "What can we do to help the families?" And so, we said, "Let's do what we normally do, let's cook some ribs and sell some ribs." So, the Tampa people wanted to get involved. So, ABC Action News called us up, and they invited us to come over and sit down at a table with the big chiefs. And I realized, once I got over there, they were checking us out, see if we were scamming. And once they realized we wasn't, they got involved, and all the news channels got involved. To make a long story short, we raised a hundred thousand dollars on one Saturday cooking ribs, and you thought it had been a mass murder scene of all the satellite trucks now on Kathleen Road, but it was amazing. The community came together, the mayor of Tampa, she was not mayor of Tampa at the time, she was the chief of police. She was there, I mean, just everybody was there. So, but we do that all the time. You can turn your hobby and passion into something that can put back into the community, and we've done that over the years, several times. As far as Lakeland, anytime anybody wants anything or needs anything, I'm there, I try to help. It's Northwest community is a very diverse community, but it's a little different than the Southside. Y'all know that. But we're still Lakeland. As the commissioner, whoever the commissioner is for Northwest, they're gonna have to help Lakeland, period. And looking at Mike, I want to tell you all something that just brought back to my mind is, I'm a Christian. I believe, and that means a lot to me. My faith in the good Lord and my family and the Ever Wednesday Night, my grandchildren at Bethel Baptist Church first, that means a lot to me. I believe, I am a believer. And I want to be a commissioner like Stephanie Madden, because I had friends of mine call me, and they said, "You're not gonna believe this, but the Everett's, you went out and spent two to three hours with them before you had a vote on something." And that's what commissioners are supposed to do. They're supposed to go out and research what the problem is before you have a vote. And that, I want, my hat's off to you for doing that. They could not praise you enough. You'll have their vote forever. I don't know if you know the family I'm talking about on Hamilton Road, but they couldn't say enough. They're good people. But I knew each and every one of y'all are, you wouldn't be here if you didn't care about the job. It's not for the money, I guarantee you. But I look at trying to make a difference, because I want to see my grandchildren and great grandchildren graduate from our great universities here in the Polk County area and stay here. I'm so afraid that Carly, my turned fourteen yesterday, she's, she's gonna go to University of Florida, I already knew that. She's made up her mind, and I'm afraid once she leaves there, there's no telling what's gonna happen. I don't want to, you know the feeling, your family moves away. I don't want that. I guess I'm selfish, but I want to keep them all in the group, because I love my grandchildren and my kids. And I'm blessed to have them all with me. But, you know, I know there are several problems in Lakeland, Lakeland Electric, the utility, but y'all are dealing with that. I don't know how that's gonna be, what you have on the agenda for, for number three, how you're gonna replace it. I guess we'll find out.
You're at about two and a half minutes left.
Two and a half minutes. Well, I can only tell you that I was noticing here earlier that I was in a hurry to get this to Kelly. Thank you, Kelly, for waiting around Friday to get my answers, but it's in closing, a Disney movie in forty. It was Jiminy Cricket said to Pinocchio, "Always let your conscience be your guide." And, you know, I heard something, and I mentioned it to someone the other day about faith. I have faith, I have faith in each and every one of y'all, but sometimes faith is believing when common sense tells you not to. But I know for a fact that faith moves mountains. And, and as long as we have faith in Lakeland and do the right thing, we can move this community forward. I know Bright Line is projected down the road, even though they're public, I mean, private railway. I think they have a stop here in Lakeland, I'm hoping, that's what I've been told. And the I-4 Express is supposed to be in construction, so all these things are gonna help us. I mean, we're right in the middle between Orlando and Tampa. I mean, if you want to get growth into Florida, you bring in other manufacturers or tech companies, why not? I mean, you've got Polytechnic that where they can pull their employees from. I'd love to see the ones that are living here can be able to stay here. I would love to see that, and hopefully, my grandchildren are gonna be some of them. Keep talking about my grandchildren, because, you know, I'm sixty-eight years old, so I don't know how many more years God's gonna let me stay on this beautiful earth, but as long as he lets me stay here, I'm gonna do everything I can to help each and every one of them, period. And I hope they always live and want to live here in Lakeland, period. Getting back to the RP Funding Center, we used to have rodeos there, and I guess they still do, but it, back in the seventy-two, you know, I'm skipping around here, because I'm thinking stuff's coming in my mind, but back in seventy-two, how much time do I have?
Ten seconds.
How many?
Ten seconds.
Well, ten seconds, well, that doesn't leave me a whole, a lot of time, but to say, thanking each and every one of y'all, I'm very impressed with y'all, because I've talked to y'all, I've met y'all, so I hope y'all make the right decisions, and whatever it is, I will support y'all and stay involved in Lakeland.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You have a great day.
You too.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Can we get friends and people to email y'all, the commissioners?
Yeah, it'll be the decision we made at a public meeting next Monday, where the public is invited.
Okay, because I had someone call me yesterday, really upset that some member had told all his people to email someone, all the commissioners, so...
The boys email, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's all I need to know.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you so very much. You have a great day.
You too.
Thank you. Just been there, buddy. Just wanted to run over the format real quickly before we get started. City commission would like to hear your responses to the different questions that we submitted to you earlier. This is more the nature of a presentation on your part versus a question and answer format, so look at the questions and respond to those. The decision will not be made this morning, the city commission will make this decision on the person who filled Commissioner Walker's seat at the regular city commission meeting next Monday.
Okay.
So, this is just an opportunity for them to learn a little bit about you this morning.
Thank you, appreciate it.
What's yours?
Thank you. I want to say good morning to the city commissioners. I responded to the questions as they were aligned, and so that's how I'm gonna make my, my presentation, actually based on the alignment of the questions in their numerical order. First question was, what's your vision for Lakeland moving forward, especially your Northwest District representation? My vision for Lakeland moving forward is to review growth management models in which the city can identify scenarios that would meet its desired outcomes, such as expansion with land reservation. Then the Northwest District, my vision includes affordable housing for both for sale and rental units. This includes research to identify ways to supplement rents and mortgages. Question two, timing. There are other boards and assignments when we're able to devote time to attend. My response is yes, as I've been self-employed for the past eighteen years. My experience has been reflected. Question three, what are the largest budget amount for oversight you have approved? The largest budget or oversight I have approved has been in the amount of ten billion dollars. I've worked and developed budgets in excess of sixty million dollars. I worked for the Lakeland Housing Authority as finance manager, and at that time, the Hope Six Grant came in, it was a grant from HUD that put millions and millions of dollars into communities to basically reshape the landscape of the city. And so, this was done, and I was brought in to monitor and to make adjustments to that budget. My response, excuse me. First question one, why do you want to serve as the interim city commissioner for the Northwest District? I desire to represent the Northwest District within a governor's capacity to ensure that the voice of the Northwest District is heard and fairly represented. Question two, what's a unique perspective that you think you would bring to the current commission? The sensitivity of a citizen advocate would be the unique perspective that I would bring to the current commission. I served, I've been serving as president of the Webster Park Neighborhood Association for the past twenty years. I've had many occasions to address the city commission on issues of quality of life for the residents within our community. As such, I have adopted a personal philosophy. I believe we govern honestly, when we are able to empathize with those whom our decisions Question three, what's an issue that the city commission deals with that you would find most interesting and why? My response is, I find the issue of growth management to be most intriguing, because it affects all citizens in every quadrant of the city. Growth is already here, and it continues to come. As the city commission, we have the authority to shape how the city of Lakeland will look and feel within the next five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years. Question one, do you have time to do this job? In addition to our four meetings each month, you will be taking over the committees of Mr. Philip Walker was over, which includes legislative committee chairman, includes trips to Tallahassee several times per year, TPO board meetings in Bartow, utility committee, Lakeland Electric, Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. Do you have time for emails? My response, yes. Within my business obligations, I am afforded a flexible schedule. I will be able to attend the legislative committee meetings in Tallahassee, the TPO board meetings in Bartow, utility committee meetings, and meetings in the area, in the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. And yes, I will have time to answer my emails. Question two, what do you see as an area the city needs to address? My response is the homelessness. We have homelessness, and it's not going anywhere. In fact, it continues to grow. Someone once told me that people from other states and cities hear about Lakeland, homeless people, and they kind of converge here. So, we need to address this, find a way to mitigate it. Question three, what do you bring to the commission, and why should we select you? My response is, I bring to the commission a host of knowledge, experience, and abilities that can benefit the city of Lakeland. This includes knowledge of real estate, have Florida real estate license, citizen advocacy experience, I've been an advocate for, as long as I've been president of Webster Park Neighborhood Association... Park Naval Association, it's been about 20 years, I've come before the commission several times, which actually predates all of you, I would think. I bring budgeting, accounting, finance, entrepreneurial experience. In fact, I started my career as an accountant with the city of Lakeland and a wonderful finance director by the name of Jerry Rose, whether y'all knew him or not, and his assistant who eventually became finance director, Greg French. We had a wonderful time. I served here for about six years, then I moved on. I am currently building affordable housing in the Northwest District. My passion is affordable housing. And so I actually invested, I'm actually investing within the Northwest District by putting capital into it, improving it. In my cover letter that I wrote, I commented on the fact that I was very pleased with the Lincoln Square development that was accomplished through the CRAA. And from that, myself as well as other developers have extended that concept into the greater community, building homes. So I'll be rolling out my first affordable housing home, which I got through the city of Lakeland's infield land bank program. I would be rolling that out within the next few weeks, would be finishing that. My doctoral paper addresses various elements of affordable housing. I have a doctorate degree in business administration with emphasis on social impact. And so the dissertation or doctoral paper that I wrote dealt with affordable housing. I believe that I should be selected as the interim city commissioner for the Northwest District because of a combination of proven commitment in representing the area for the past 20 years and knowledge and abilities that cover a broad spectrum of city functions. Question one, why would you like to serve on the commission? My response is, I would like to represent the Northwest District and the city of Lakeland by applying my acquired educational achievements and practical experience within the governors of the city. I hold a doctorate degree, as I said, in business administration with emphasis on social impact. I hold a master's degree in business administration. I hold a bachelor's degree in public administration and political science. I hold an associate of arts degree in accounting. I hold a Florida real estate license. Question two, what assets will you bring? And I think I've just mentioned some of them. Response, the assets that I would bring to the city include, A, knowledge of city functions from having served here as an accountant for six years. One thing about being an accountant is that you get to learn all the departments and all the divisions, because you have to deal with their budgets and their accounting. So I learned how the city works. B, I have financial knowledge. C, knowledge of real estate. D, knowledge of affordable housing. And E, understanding of citizens advocacy. In addition, I would bring a passion for excellence. Question three, what is the most challenging issue you have had to work through professionally? And how could that experience apply to serving in this role? I once had to bring a company from the state of bankruptcy and foreclosure to a state of solvency. And I did that through foresight. I saw that the company was headed to a state of bankruptcy and foreclosure. The company was rich in commercial property but poor in cash. So what I did was, I went out and got my real estate license. And I sold a million point, five million dollars, a million and a half, a million and a half dollars' worth of real estate. And that got us out of foreclosure bankruptcy and put us into the black. And I'm still working with that company. It's through these funds that we received through the sale of these properties that we're now able to build affordable housing. The universal application is that for every problem, there is a solution. And this would also apply to the city. Question four, what do you know about infrastructure and how it works? Infrastructure includes roads, bridges, sewers, railways, tunnels, water supply, and other facilities, as well as services that provide for the functioning of municipalities and other elements of society. It also includes putting systems in place that allow for the functioning of cities and other organizations. And it is especially, it would be especially important during this period of growth that the city of Lakeland now experiences.
So you're at three minutes.
I'm at three minutes? Okay, well, I don't even need that. I might need half of that. Okay, question one, describe your skill set, excuse me, describe how your skill sets best fit the needs for representing citizen interests from the Northwest District and the city overall. My skill sets include both oral and written communication, as well as an analytical problem solving. I have a background in finance and real estate and currently building affordable housing within the Northwest District. I bring a sensitivity for citizen advocacy. These skill sets will serve both the Northwest District and the city of Lakeland overall. Question two, in particular, what is or are your areas of passion for the city? My area of passion for the city is the development of affordable housing. I have a passion for affordable housing and therefore I'm actually working my passion right now. And that's a great thing. Praise God. Question three, in reviewing what has been accomplished in the last five years by the commission's governor, what is the most significant unaddressed job you would like to see addressed? Response, I believe the homelessness issue still needs to be addressed. Thank you for allowing me to share my responses to your questions. Certainly, if you have any follow-up questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Again, thank you.
We're 13 minutes and 30.
Okay.
Commissioner Ross, are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for your match. We appreciate you.
So as we reflect on this. Submitted written questions, as you've seen. And this morning is an opportunity for you to address those questions. This would be more in the nature of a presentation versus a question and answer interview format. So I just want to hear you address the different questions that have been submitted. Decision will not be made this morning. It will be made next Monday at the city commission meeting. So with that, unless you have any questions, four of yours.
I don't have any questions yet. I have a lot of them, tons of them, but not here now. All right. Good morning, everybody. I am Saga Stevens, and I will do my best to answer your questions in a very timely manner, although in a particular order. Basically, this is going to be an overview of my assumption of what you're looking for, what you need as far as an interim position kind of thing goes. I do have that there would be time left over for a couple of questions and have learned that you're not going to ask any. So there goes that. First, let me acknowledge the position that you have been placed in by your, our constituents in that you get to make the decision and it's not being voted on to choose interims for Philip Walker. And I look at it as it's an honor bestowed on you because you are the leaders and you're trusted. So you get to make all kinds of important decisions that will affect our wonderful city, and no one said it would be easy. In being charged with finding the best interim commission for my leading guess is that you would like to have somebody who could at least have a running start and also get caught up to where you are in this year's, where you are in this schedule of duties now. So I will try to bullet point a few of the answers to your questions. Am I familiar with infrastructure? Well, while running last year, I took the opportunity to meet with and learn about the fire department, police, Lakeland Electric, Lakeland Development Council, the updated city charter, Lakeland Airport, Parks and Rec, Traffic and Utilities. Additionally, I went to neighborhood association meetings, met with the Lakeland Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber, Rotary, Kiwanis, and many other businesses, churches, and anyone who wanted to know who the heck I was and where did I come from. And there was a lot. I did a deep dive, reading anything I could get my hands on. Research is one of my hobbies and I pick up pretty quick. I'm a quick learner. And I actually read the entire 285-page 2030 plan for Lakeland. The best part I found about running for office last year is meeting the people who are the heartbeat of the city and getting to know those who live here in various areas. I got to know their concerns, their complaints, their compliments, and what they would like to see. My heart is to serve Lakeland, to be able to offer a perspective of being raised here, traveling the world, living across the country, spreading my wings, and coming home. You're looking to fill a big pair of shoes. One of the team is moving on. To build a strong team means a diversity of thought, skills, and talent. Some of my background includes being on the board of Citizens Council for Health Freedom. We're a legislative organization working with individual states as well as on a national level. So as to the question about Mr. Walker's legislative duties in Tallahassee, I am familiar with legislation in general and how it works on a statewide and a national level. Because of my medical background, which some of you may or may not know about, I'm a lab specialist. I do a specialized medical treatment called PRP, which is platelet-rich plasma. So the medical realm is a strong suit of mine. In Florida, I've been working with the Medical Freedom Coalition and am a member nationally of the Free Market Medical Association. Being on the board of the Polk Education Foundation has given me an additional glimpse into our schools and another aspect of the lives of those in our community. The boards I serve on all require budget oversight, roughly up to about $7 million for the organizations that I'm involved with. One of the many things I really love about being on these boards is the uniqueness of each board member and how we work together for the benefit of the organization. The more minds, the better, in most instances. It's an honor to be a part of the teams and bring my unique perspective to the table. As you know, teamwork is a key ingredient. Discussion, learning, asking questions, researching, and coming together for what would be best for the Northwest District and the community at large also requires synergy. The Northwest District is very unique in a few ways in particular. It has a very socio-economic diverse population. We have the extremely impoverished along the Wabash Corridor, up to very wealthy. We also have a district rich in a variety of cultures. This is fabulous. From the African-American to the Hispanic. Hispanic sadly is a catch-all for all people from Cuba, Puerto Rico, Guatemala, Nicaragua, Mexico. Each have their own unique cultures, as well as a very large senior demographic. We also have a lot of industry. And we have Bonnet Springs Park opening later this month, which is great. My heart is in bridging the gaps, not only in my district, but in the community at large. As to time available, I'm very fortunate because the work that I do, I set my own hours. Generally, I travel one week out of each six to eight for my work. So yes, I could dedicate time to not only getting up to speed, because I know that's going to take extra time, but also being available for tasks at hand to the best of my ability. Having said that, there will be a lot of questions, and I'm full of really good questions. I realize I have a lot to learn. Like you, I feel called to serve our community. This is what prompted me to run last year. As you all know, when you're running, you get the opportunity to meet the people behind the scenes, as well as those who simply want to be served. Like you, I put myself out there to be scrutinized by everyone. And like you, I understand the importance of being available and sometimes being like a rod and having to make hard decisions that are not going to make everyone happy. And like you, I understand the value of teamwork. Most of all, like you, I love this city. I thank God every day, and not just in the winter, that I live in Lakeland. This is what I would like for everybody in this city to say. As to why you would choose me? Because I am the only applicant who chose to run last year and there were available seats. The experience and trust I gained puts me ahead of the other candidates for this transition. I'm ready to work, I have the time, and I want to work with you. Having said all that, thank you for your consideration. I also know that as far as you wanted to know what issues, different things like that, a lot of the issues, I mean, I shouldn't say are basic and are basic. Going to Lake Wire, Lake Wire District is very concerned, they're top what issues are. Drugs, prostitution, homelessness, and chickens. And chickens seem to be on a lot of lists. It's a wide variety. And again, I don't know where you all in detail, in depth, with what's going on. I do know that I would be a voice for the Northwest District as varied as it is socio-economically and culturally. Again, I graduated Kathleen, I've actually, I'm in the same neighborhood I grew up in, which is really wonderful. So it's not only about our district, which again is unique in the industry and everything else, it's about being a part of a team, and the team is for Lakeland. So that's where my heart is, that's what I want. If anybody has any questions, and I know you're not allowed to ask them, please feel free to reach out after this. And I do have copies of this that you all can... So not too many notes that you had to make. My pleasure. So thank you all very, very much. And I don't envy you and I respect your decision. I'm sure it'll be what's best because you know what you have to do.
Do you have any questions, Ross?
I have so many, but it would take a lot more than seven minutes. It's basically, well, let me see, okay, I got like four minutes left. One of my questions is, because I know that you've already gone over so many things for this year's duties. In ramping up to speed, what kind of time do you see? Because I, like I say, when I go away to work, I fly up to Minnesota for work, and I'm up there when I'm up there, when I'm down here. My number one priority here is my mom. Other than that, I'm pretty wide open. Would you all have time to work with me and catch me up to speed as best as possible? Or is it just come to the meetings and go from there?
There's typically an onboarding process that the city manager's office sort of helps, you know, define and what your areas of interest. I know we all probably did different things. I had, I went and tried to meet with every director. I came in in a special election, so, you know, I wasn't on an onboarding timeline like some of my other peers were. So I just built it into my schedule. So three hours, you know, electric, three hours with water. You know, we kind of, I did it that way. And that's just how I caught up. I don't know how y'all, I know Stephanie's was probably a little different because there were four of you that came in at once.
We had bus tours and they, you know, Kelly had to accompany us because it was more than one person for sunshine. So since they had four, they used the benefit of the four to give us kind of a collective onboarding. I think when it is one at a time, it's a little different. But ours was more systematic and it was scheduled in advance. Sounds like yours is a little bit more flexible on the scheduling, so that might be a bonus that, you know.
Sean was our deputy at the time, so he and I just worked together and he sort of helped my, he knew my schedule. And I would say, he's like, hey, we could go do this. And so we kind of, that's what I would probably see in this position as well. There'd be a little more flexibility with it.
Yeah, because I did like, you know, way back when I did the Citizens.
Right.
The.
Academy.
Thank you. The Citizens Academy. And then like I say, last year, I did, I took six months and it was full-time to meet with everyone as, you know, and just be out there for all kinds of scrutiny. And so no, I don't obviously have a thin skin. And like I say, I just... And like I say, I just, I feel very called to do this. It's never been like, oh, I want to be in politics. It's never been that. I've been more the background with that and helping out on different things, but I just, I love this city. I just absolutely love Lakeland, and Lakeland is so unique in so many ways. And it's just a great place to live, to be raised, to fly away, spread your wings, and to come home to. And that's what I really see that everybody I talk to, and also having, you know, been at First Friday for so long, talking to people that move here, they move here because of our values, they move here because it's a good place for family. So that's kind of why I'm up. I know you guys can't ask any questions. Thank you so much, and thanks for the opportunity. All right, have a great weekend.
You too. See you.
All right, do y'all need a break?
Roll it.
Jump right into it? Okay. Okay, just, first of all, we did not broadcast this live because we didn't want any waiter or skinned a candidate to have an advantage over earlier candidates. So I'm not exactly sure when this will be broadcast, probably pretty soon, but nonetheless, the mayor and Mr. Walker, you know, not adopted to see this, so you know, I'm not sure if they'll be able to see this, but at some point, they will be looking at it. So again, this will be made next Monday. There's different ways you can go about making the decision, and it's obviously all fully public process. I know the comment was made at the last meeting, I believe, of the commissioners ranking their top three candidates, and I'm not quite sure how that would work, just as an theoretical statistical matter. I think you'd have to rank all eight candidates unless there was a really strong consensus around your top three in order to get an accurate ranking of the candidates. So that's one, one way to go about that. That's the way our purchasing division ranks vendors and ends up with their shortlist, and then they choose from that. That's certainly not a required process, and I guess the disadvantage of that process is you do have a very public ranking of top to last, last place. Another approach is simply to have a discussion on Monday and ultimately lead to a motion and a vote. It's obviously a more qualitative, subjective approach to it, but it avoids the drawbacks of a ranking system. So those are your primary options for moving forward, and those are certainly not the only options. If you have another approach that you prefer, the only requirement is that it ultimately be a majority vote of the City Commission at a public meeting. I will say that the Commissioner Walker's resignation is effective November 7th, so that's 12:01 a.m., November 7th. We do have a City Commission meeting that, that day, so theoretically, the candidate could be sworn in and be seated at the November 7th meeting.
Do we have, do we know at this point how heavy our meeting is going to be? Because we have a heavy agenda for, do we know?
The Wedgwood zoning case is moving forward, but I think that is actually, I think that would be considered by the Planning and Zoning Board at the, later in October. So yeah, that would probably be heading, that would probably be first reading...
Yeah, just a first reading on that, that'd be good.
...November 7th, and then the hearing, the second meeting in November, which, but that, that would be controversial. There's a lot of opposition to that.
We have our, Palmer and I, our offices have our agenda study tomorrow morning, and so we'll have a better handle on that tomorrow. I don't, other than what Palmer just mentioned from coming from City Attorney, I don't think City Manager or CRA is going to be extremely heavy. But we'll know more tomorrow. It's just a preliminary look is not very, except for the one Palmer mentioned.
I'm, I'm just speaking for myself here. I'm, I'm open to whatever, you know, we decide is the best system, but I think there's a lot of advantages to having a top three. You know, whether we have it internally, we just say, hey, you know, Mike, I'm going to go one, two, three, here's who I'd like. And then seeing if there's a consensus in there. The downside is, is that because there's so many candidates, that if we, if we're nowhere near that, that's difficult, because I think what that does, and you know, we shouldn't necessarily be concerned with the optics, but we're still human, and we're still people, and we do look at optics. So you know, if we don't have to put somebody as our eighth pick, I don't, I don't have a problem not doing that, you know, as opposed to having a top three. And if it's, if it's just as we all evaluate this, if three don't rise to the top for us, then maybe that's not a possibility. So that's just my voice.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, and of course, I feel similar to your thoughts as well. Again, I would like to see it to be a top four to 50%. Again, no one, I don't want anyone to feel last. And again, it may not appear there will be a number one, too, but I think we've had a great selection of people here to come forward, in my opinion. And I think all of them are sincere, all of them are well-qualified. Just some may come to the top a little bit more. I can have my opinions as well as anyone else does. And I would like to see maybe a one through four. In that way, and then we can do an analysis of, you know, add them up, and I don't know if one's going to come to the top. We may...
A couple of questions on that. Is this one, what, what do you, what's the purpose of coming up with a one through four? And the second question is, how do you get there, other than ranking all eight candidates?
Well, I think, personally, I would think that there are four that would come to the top, in my opinion.
And what do you do with that? Does that just help the discussion on the next Monday?
Well, that would just, again, I don't know, it's, it's hard to say, you know, I would, I don't want to feel like somebody is number eight when somebody's number one. I mean, I think...
I think what Palmer's asking is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is if we rank one to four, is there a point system attributed to each four? And I think what Reed is saying is that four is half of the circle of eight that we have right now. And if everybody takes it to four, then do you do a rubric where you have, like, number one gets four points, number two gets three points, and then to one, and then you aggregate that out? I understand your statistical problem of all eight.
I don't know how you can get to a top four without ranking them one through eight.
Well, that's hard.
Well, I think what he's saying, we each have our own personal one through four.
That we bring to the table Monday, and then collectively seeing if those top four...
Resonate.
Coincide.
The obvious mathematical issue there, though, is if someone ranked someone in the top four that someone else did not...
Right.
Then you, mathematically, one of the things I mentioned to Palmer, I mean, mathematically for it to work out, you know, the Commission could rank all eight. We could, you know, we could then tabulate that, and the Commission could decide that you're only going to announce the top three or four. Now, obviously, it's a public record, and people will be able to get the scoring, but you won't have to go through the full discussion of all eight.
I think what we're saying, and I'll go to Chad and X is, the way I think of it is, if I rank the top, because I like the idea of ranking the top four, is I think all those top four lists are going to look really similar. I could be wrong, where somebody has, somebody has eight, and what you're, and I understand your points, but I think if you took the top four, you could see if there were those common threads. You know, like, everybody had Mr. Smith on their list. We don't have Mr. Smith, right?
No.
Everybody had Mr. Smith on their list somewhere in that top ranking, and maybe, maybe five of us had Mr. Smith at number one. I think that's kind of where, what y'all are saying, right?
It's going to take a four-vote majority anyway, and so I may have somebody as number one, and they don't even make the list, that's my, my choice, but they're still going to make the top four. And probably my number two may be in that top four.
Right.
Or my number three could be in the top four, but my number one may not be, and that's just the way, it's just the way, it's just the way the ball bounces per se.
Commissioner McLeod?
The question I would have is, and this is what we're trying to work through, is the next step. If we all submit our top four, then at that point, do we open up for nominations from that group? But we may have different top-four rankings.
But they score the top four, so we are giving our scores, and then you're taking the scores...
They get a collective top four?
Yeah, so we each have our own score, we're just not having to give anyone an eight or a seven and say...
I don't like the one-through-eight ranking system.
Yeah, so if we just rank our top four, then those rest of the four got a zero from us, basically.
So you're saying that they would tabulate the collective top four?
Then they tabulate, yes.
And from, this is where I'm struggling, from that group, from that ranking...
Yes.
We would decide and would discuss.
Then it comes from a collective top four.
Because I do think there's, my question at first was, could we do this without a ranking with just opening up discussion and nominations? I see the points...
Be difficult.
Value of having that, some sort of system to get to a smaller list.
If you're just doing a top four, that may not work out the way you want it to. I mean, you may have ties and things like that. The only way to really do it is eight, but I understand concern with that as well.
But you could still work with a top four from each of us and try to see where that...
If everybody else, if the other four bottom are all zero across the board, then that aggregates in, like what Commissioner McLeod says.
Yeah, if when they count it, the last fours are zeros. But I know you said that there could be lots of ties, but how many ties could there be? There, well, I guess it could be.
Well, if you, if you have four, and you start with 10, then eight, then six, and then, you know, four points, there'll be an aggregate number that would be to the top. You know, then we'll come up to the top three, and they may have to go from there to top two. There may be one that overwhelming is, is the number one pick from that four, and that would be the candidate that we...
Sorry. Commissioner Music had...
Well, I just, and I'm wondering if maybe we're overthinking this, and I don't want to downplay it because this is a big deal, but you know, we have a lot of things that come in front of us that are really big deals, and then Commissioner McLeod says, I move for blank. Right? I mean, is there, is there a reason that we just don't sit there and we look across at each other and say, do we have a nomination? And then, and then just, just like we normally would, right? I nominate Mr. Smith, I get a second, now we talk about it.
Yeah.
And then, and I'm just, I'm just wondering if maybe we don't take it back to what we're used to doing with our, with our normal procedures.
Normal activities.
Well, I was going to say, when we appointed Commissioner Selvage, that's the way we did it, right? We didn't do a ranking, we took the names and those who'd applied, and I think somebody brought forth, we liked to appoint Don for the, for the interim, and we went that way. It was smaller, it was less formal, but it was the same approach of just opening up discussion.
But we absolutely can do that.
So we can do it, yeah.
But I think in order to give everybody an equal chance, again, candidates, I nominate Mr. Smith.
Right.
And then, I don't like Mr. Smith. Now, he's not my number one choice, and he may not be your number one choice. It may not be your number choice, but he could be the other four. But then, without having to give Mr. Jones a chance, it'd be, I think it's, we need to do a numerical number down the line, because yeah, who makes the nomination?
Because you're inclined to have negatives as to why you don't want to vote for anyone, rather than me suggest my positives, the ones that I...
But I think you're doing the same thing, you're doing it numerically, though.
No, but what I'm saying is, I have to say why I'm not going to, I'd be like, no.
Well, I prefer, I prefer Mrs. Smith as opposed to Mr. Smith. It doesn't have to be a negative, you don't have to tell what you don't like. And again, I'm just dialoguing with you, trying to help with this. I don't, I don't know, I just, I mean, we, we have areas in the past where we have had multiple, and we've, we've made decisions based on multiples, so we haven't necessarily sat here and ranked everybody, or, or the company, or the...
Could we do this?
We haven't really had multiples like this. Usually, it's a yes or a no, pretty much, it's upper hands down, not like eight different choices.
True, true, this is definitely, you're right.
That's the difference in the algorithm, you know, that we... Personally, the statistics, I should say. Have our own rankings that are not submitted for any kind of rubric or any kind of scoring, and when we come back together on Monday, we all personally have our own top, our draft list, one to eight, and then somebody says, I nominate so-and-so, and if it resonates, and then we go through, whoever gets the four votes...
Well, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah.
No, no, that's, no, no, that's basically what I'm suggesting is, internally, I mean, I made notes, as you did, and mental notes of who you like, and Bill and Phillip will do the same thing.
Right.
And we're going to get there and do it. There, there certainly can be a downside, but I think that, that one way or the other, this may avoid doing a complete ranking out in, in, in the public, and if, if that's not the best way, then, I mean, what don't you like maybe about just nominating again? Would you mind refreshing my memory on that?
Well, because any, it's like statistically, if you have eight choices and seven people picking, the statistical, you know, probability that you're going to come up with one person from that is not probable. I mean, what are the percentages? Like, what's the probability that seven people could all statistically pick this, the one person out of eight? I mean, I'm not the statistics queen here, but...
But I, but I do think, would, would, would we agree that without even saying names, that that's probably not going to happen? I mean, I think that there...
Why would it not? Do you already have yours ranked in your head?
Yes.
I haven't even done that yet.
Oh, this will take me a week to think about this.
And you and I...
I think you would offer, if your nomination is, let's say Commissioner Music makes a nomination, and that's not who you, is your top choice, then you would have the chance to offer your nomination as well in that discussion, and then we work through that. We work it down and publicly.
I guess even, I don't have a one person, I mean, I hope that even when I'm ranking them, my top four is kind of like...
A tie.
Any of those four.
And I'm right with you, I agree with that 100%.
And so that's why I'd like to get four, that I think these would be fine.
Agreed.
And, and then those four, depending, and then to me, the ranking of them collectively makes it not my choice that I nominated. It's collectively the statistics and the math that brought it to the top, and then, then you vote on it. It just seems fairer.
So you don't, Stephanie, let me just clarify, you don't want them ranked one to eight to submit to staff, or you do?
I wouldn't mind, but I, I agree with, with trying not to say, I'm going to rank you number eight and number seven. I mean, in my opinion, I think they're all, you know, put their, I think they're all qualified, so an eight is not a loser, you know? But if that is what they would feel, or if that's what anyone would think, then I would, if we could avoid that, then I would, so that's when I then said, go to one to four, and everything under that is a zero, because they're all, you know, the same, they didn't make my top four cut. But my top four are ranked in a way to where, if you put all the math together, even if there's a tie, great, a tie is great, right? Don't we, that would help us all know that we have kind of come to the same. But just nominating someone out of the clear blue sky, like, just seems kind of random instead of more...
I would agree if no thought was put in.
Hold on a second, just a second. So I'm just trying to clarify so we can be, give staff kind of some direction, is that who doesn't want to rank one through eight? Okay, so, okay, that's over, we're not going to do that one. So who is okay with ranking one to four, and then, then five to eight is zero on their list?
Okay with that, yeah.
All right, so everybody's good with submitting one to four, then number five through eight gets a zero on your list? And then that might give us some kind of gel to start with on the discussion on Monday. Is that good?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
And you said Monday, I was, I was going to ask about the timing of it, because if you submit that to Kelly or me by Friday, that's, that's a public record, that's going to be in the paper Sunday, so, but if you hold it until Monday, then that loses that discussion for, for the City Commission meeting.
So what do y'all want to do?
Well, the mayor's not here, Phillip's not here, so I think we bring it to Monday. And then we hand it over to the person who does the counting, and they do the counting, and then they report back to us, and then we make our motion.
That's fine, I love that.
Something that's sort of been a little bit, kind of, I think, more fair in how we do it in procurement, and, I mean, the reason they do it in procurement is to be fair, because people are competing for these things, and it's important to them to feel that they were vetted fairly.
I think I could have a list of four, and it would make a difference to me which one of those four...
Agreed.
I think that's a...
I think that's going to be the majority.
That's how we all, I think we all feel the same way.
And, and I think there's, I think that would, that's the way I like to, would like to see it done personally.
Yeah, it'd be like the same numbers help us decide that, rather than just making a motion.
It may not be my number one, but it would have been number two, but...
That's fine.
Is that good?
I have no issue with that.
That helps.
I concur with you, there again...
It may not be perfect on Monday, but that's...
That's okay.
Get us down the road and make the decision.
It's just a frame of mind to start with, it's not like just wide open, we're going to be here for us.
Because we don't want to, I don't want to put Phillip in a unique situation. Again, Phillip knows all of them, I don't know all of them, and again, and you, or anybody that might know all the candidates. You know, I don't want any one person to feel that they were not hired for top four per se, but I mean, invariably, they're going to find out who's going to be picked, but they don't necessarily need to know that they're number, were number eight, or they could have been, they could have been number five.
So Kelly, would you prefer that they submit this at the beginning of the meeting, and maybe you can have Heather compile it, so that we're ready to go at the end of the meeting, or?
Yeah.
Would y'all rather do it at the end?
Do y'all want, let me ask another question to help Heather.
Yeah, because if you give it to Heather, then people are going to call my office asking for it, while she's trying to do it.
To calculate it. Well, here's the other thing, do the top four have points assigned? So, your number one pick has got eight points, you're number two point...
Eight.
Well, since there are eight people, why don't we give the number one person eight points?
Number one, number one.
And then the person with the fewest.
And then the fewest number is the one that's on the list.
Fewest is your top pick.
Well, but then you have zeros at the bottom.
If you only...
So, then do you win, do you win at zero? Like, that'll be the fewest.
Give them all eight.
Okay, so y'all will figure out how you're going to grade it?
Sure.
Well, we're going to give you four, each person will give you four names, that's it.
So, you're not going to give the other names, you're just going to come with your top?
What age are you going to give us, are you going to say, all right, my four, my top pick is one point, my second pick is two?
I'm going to have one, I'm going to have two, I'm going to have three, I'm going to have four.
We got to be pretty clear on that, because we're going to be making calculations.
So, your number one is your number one.
You're going to give us to, you're going to give the list in ranked order?
Yes.
With your number one choice being at the top of just...
We'll send an email out to make this very clear.
So that the other two who are absent will also know to come prepared.
Yeah. All right, and, okay, so everybody's good with that, Sean?
Yeah.
Everybody's good, okay?
It's just, it's going to be difficult if some of the lists have names that the other list don't.
Right.
That's going to be very...
But they will, they'll be zero on everybody else's list, so you only get two.
I don't know if they should give the list to us ahead of time, or if they should just bring the list to the meeting, and we talk about it at that time.
Once it's submitted, it's a public record, so...
As long as it's just your personal notes, it's your personal notes, but once you give it to me, it's...
Do we want to, do we have to put our name on the list first?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I'm fine with, I don't know about y'all, I'm fine with giving you my top four.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're going to ask for it before you see everybody else's top four? While we're in commission?
They'll bring it Monday, right? I mean, it works, to do, to submit it on Monday.
I just want to be clear.
Well, they can't ask us for it in advance, we don't even know what we'll have it done.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you give those to us Monday morning, and so while you're in commission, considering all your other work...
No, we're going to do it at the end, right?
But they'll be asking Heather for the information while you're in commission, doing all your other work, if you give it to...
So, just wait till the mayor, the commission, push in the agenda.
Wait till the conversation, I think is the best.
Submit it well calculated on the fly, and then announce it.
That's what I was going to ask, is like, what kind of timeframe you need, because it would be great to grab them, take them to you, and at that time, now we're talking, you're talking about the legal aspect of it, we're talking about what we've done, so it's all on topic. Heather, you run, and then come back, I think that would be easy, safe.
Just point of information, when you look at brand scoring, or even procurement scoring, when we're on these calls, they're doing it in real time, like, there's the spreadsheet, spreadsheet on the screen, so, you could actually say, Commissioner McClellan, what are your rankings, and type of men right there?
Well, we did that when we were hiring people, too, so we did that at the same time.
Easy.
Everybody good?
I think I'm forgetting anything here.
So, we're going to, we're going to do it, we're going to turn in our list on the agenda study?
No.
No, Monday at commission.
Monday at commission, okay.
At the end, at the end, until that point.
Just put it in your pocket, we'll tell you when to bring it out.
It's your little piece of paper.
Hold on, until they ask, well, now it's yours.
I just want to clarify, and I think we all concur, that we are very grateful, since it's still a public meeting, that so many people participated in this process, so many people are willing to serve, I think it's admirable for people to step in, and go through this, this very unique process that we've never done before, and be patient with us while we've done it, so I just want to say thank you, and people that gave up time this[1681.13]